Good evening, welcome to the council meeting on March eighteenth. Anyone in the audience needs any amplified headphones, please raise your hand and we'll bring those to you. Not seen any. Um, bless Christ for the life.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right.
Mary, will you do a roll call?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Blush.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Mayor Anisco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Saff.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Thank you, Mary. Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? City manager.
Mr. Mayor.
The council have any board reports to share?
What do you, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember, yes.
Um, Parks Advisory Board for the Shelton Metropolitan Park District at CEPD. Um, we heard a presentation from Mel Schneider about a capital improvement project that they wanted to start at Catalyst Park. Um, they requested that we um let them have a study session with us to look at these capital improvements that they would like to do. And they would also like to invite us to a field trip to look at the current park and see what kind of improvements that we'd like come up there and fit into their big vision.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Thank you. We'll get with Mark and chief, we set that up.
Yeah.
All right. Any other board reports? All right. Has everyone had a chance to read the consent agenda?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
Mr. Mayor, I'm looking to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, the second, to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. All right. The council invites the public to make comments on matters of city business. Comments shall be made to the entire council and not individual councilmembers. Please refrain from any personal or disrespectful remarks that create disruption to the meeting. If unreasonable, disruptive content continues, we ask to leave the meeting. Mary, anyone sent another comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Alicia Otto.
Yeah.
Here.
City members of the city council, thank you for allowing me to speak today about an issue that touched the heart of Mason County's community. Homelessness. I come before you to advocate for reinstatement of the homeless task force and to propose a planning of homeless mitigation site. Homelessness is not just a statistic. It's people, fathers, mothers, veterans, and children. In recent years, we have seen how untreated issues like lack of shelter space, mental health struggles, substance use, lack of low-income housing, and unemployment have rippled through our streets impacting every corner of this city. While this is nationwide crisis, we have the power to act locally with empathy and effectiveness. Reinstituting the homeless task force is a critical first step. This task force was instrumental in bringing diverse stakeholders together. Nonprofits, faith-based organizations, housing authorities, healthcare providers, and everyday citizens. Uniting them with a shared purpose, addressing homelessness comprehensively. By reinstating it, we can return the collaborative, evidence-based solutions that work. Not just temporary fixes, but long-term strategies that reduce homelessness sustainability. Second, the urgent need for a homeless mitigation site cannot be overstated. This site provides immediate relief by offering a safe sanitary space for unhoused individuals while connecting them to essential services. Without this, homelessness becomes more visible, unmanageable, and harmful, not just for those experiencing it, but for our entire community. Homelessness is a multifaceted issue that requires a comprehensive and compassionate approach. Substance use disorders play a significant role. Um, leaving many individuals in a cycle of addiction and instability. Without proper support and treatment, these challenges intensify with devastating consequences for both the unhoused and our larger community. The impact has been very evident throughout our neighborhoods. Encampments often lead to harmful byproducts such as discarded paraphernalia, human waste, and litter, which not only diminish the quality of life, but also pose environmental hazards, waterways, and green spaces. These issues disrupt the safety and functionality of private properties and public areas affecting businesses, residents, and visitors alike that come to our community. We cannot allow consequences of this crisis to erode the well-being of the community further. A mitigation site is not about enabling homelessness. It's about mitigating harm and creating pathways to stability. With proper planning, such as, such a site can be orderly and provide impactful solutions. The reality is, solutions do exist. What we need is the collective will to implement them. By reinstating homeless task force and planning a mitigation site, we would demonstrate our city's commitment to dignity, equity, and opportunity for all. Let us not wait until challenges are too big to overcome. Let's choose to act now together for a future where every member of our community has a chance to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tanner Offertal.
Right. For those of you that don't know, my name is Tanner. I just wanted to come up in front of everybody today and just reiterate exactly what Alicia just said. Uh, I think a mitigation site would be absolutely fantastic for us. As somebody who works in the utilities above city, I recognize the problem that this has been. That has been escalating for the last few years. I mean, it's been for a long time, but to be honest, last year it's gotten pretty bad. Um, I've been working with Alicia a lot lately and have been able to go out and actually see what's going on and to see this, uh, to visually see, visually see six feet where the trash will once law is devastating to me and to my family and to those of us that want to go out and enjoy where we live. And I think trying to reinstate the task force and find a place for them to be in one spot where we can contain the problem rather than let it spread all over the place or places where we can't do something about it, I think is very, very intelligent. That's pretty much all I wanted to say about that, but I have two other things. Um, the CODA survey, Wiggles really sucks still. I just want to voice that. That really sucks. And again, as somebody that works in the utilities, um, I've noticed that I don't really know what to do about it, but the roundabout there on Alder and First, um, we're still getting trucks trying to go around the corner store right there. And it's bad because you have traffic so bad that coming from that background, um, the one thing you don't want to do is plug up traffic in town. And it is plugging up traffic so bad in town that it is causing way more requirements some parts of the day than that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dave Redman.
I promise I didn't put Alicia and same mind. Just those are the problems. I manage the Shelton Village Village.
Just kind of focus on shelter.
Uh, in these meetings, I've heard a lot of complaints about people being unhoused, uh, and feeling some discomfort that they both uh, most statements that they should be moved. Uh, that's almost to do with size and sound, the smells of people that have been barely hanging on to life and existence for a extended period of time. And you know what? They're right. They should be moved to support them to places where we have around services that can assist them and getting back to work and getting them the help that they need. Uh, it's called the home first model and it works. Uh, getting a person to a safe place where they can call home, where they get a shower, get a steady diet. Uh, it goes a long way. It was bringing the person back into the workforce. And what that does is brings the money back, uh, tax dollars back into the community when they're beginning that job. It frees up a purchase bonders time as soon as this falls to manage. But then it opens up space and hospitals in the yards because you know, leave them house no longer. Same space as they have department for crisis. Uh, recently, the Washington State Healthcare Authority, they helped send the program out. This is from June of twenty twenty four. Uh, in that timeframe, I'm sorry, it's gonna be. Uh, from June twenty twenty four, there were a total of roughly twelve hundred and forty-six individuals enrolled. Of those enrolled individuals, two hundred and sixty-seven of them received a housing subsidy in the financial service. A little over a thousand received case management. And two hundred and fifty-nine received mental health care services. This went towards bringing them back into the workforce again. There's a lot more of that. I mean, it's a bunch of like the efforts being made by Washington State to accommodate people off of the streets. And I like to think of that our little village up on Hill, uh, as part of that. Uh, yeah, that's it. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Susan Pollard.
Hi, my name is Susan Pollard. I own the Top of Pop here downtown. Um, this is my first city council meeting, so I'm a little intimidated. Um, but I'm glad that I came tonight because I do want to hear more about this mitigation site that we're talking about. This is the first time hearing of it. Because I kind of run on the stuff that you said our whole shopping thing going through. Um, in front of the recovery cafe, you do have people camped out. They're sleeping there overnight. I mean, it's not as cold. They can't be comfortable. Um, it also is the perception of that coming around the corner for our customers, whether they feel safe or not. Um, you know, what's going on over in that area. Uh, I myself called the police last week, created an emergency number for a gentleman that was urinating outside of the building over there. Um, there is a vacant house in between my store and the Top of Pop and it is kind of, I guess, I'm attracted to drug use and just kind of other things that are going on over there. So that's not really helping. Um, we also had another gentleman that brought our naps over and started chopping down our fence. Um, my son, who happens to work there, went out and asked him what he was doing and he said he needed firewood. So I mean, there's just some, there's issues and it has to be dealt with and it's coming from those sides, from the business side and then the people that need help and need resources. Um, it's also causing some safety issues for my customers. Um, some of these folks are can't handle me. Um, it makes my customers feel um uncomfortable. Um, there's been an increase in shopping definitely over the last at least year or so. Um, and again, just that perception of what's going on. Um, our little store is old, our little fence is old and so you know, we may not be the best looking business in town, but we do try to keep our area clean. We do try to, you know, be, um, we, we want to be, we want to look good in there. Um, and it's not looking so good these days. Um, so like I said, I have had to call the non-emergency number. I called six times in the last fourteen days. Um, you know, whether they respond or not, I'm not sure. Um, because I let them do their thing after I make the call. Um, and then I've also contacted code enforcement through their complaint form, which I don't know if that's the right way to do things, but I'm just trying to reach out to figure out anyway. Um, for us to get help and maybe whatever we can use to help with the situation. Um, I did speak, I, this is Alicia that I just met tonight. Um, I did speak to her by phone and from what I understand, there were not any services right now coming out of there. So I guess what I'm kind of dealing with or wondering is why they're being allowed to sleep out there and you know, obviously maybe they don't have any place to go, but uh, these are just some of the issues that we're facing. Um, and I just want to get involved and that's why I wanted to be here tonight. Um, and I do want to hear more about some of these ideas. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Dean Jewitt.
Good evening. Thanks for being here. Uh, it's funny. You know, you go, you look at a menu at Denny's, how many times you change your mind, right? So I changed my mind and I had a whole topic and, and, and dad that I was going to chat about tonight. And I decided not to. So I wrote out another one. Then I listened to all these people come down and have their conversations and now I'm looking at my third choice. Uh, and I, I speak with passion. I speak with my heart and I speak with facts and the truth. Uh, there's a lot of people in this room that families have lived here in Sheldon's community forever, right? Eric, Mark, myself, I mean, you know, some of us hundreds of years. Uh, and I've been down, coming down here for five years. Seeing and listening and hearing what some of these people are, are talking about, and some of these people are coming here for the first time. So why are they coming here for the first time? Why haven't they been coming here? They're, you know, they're getting that same passion. They care about our community. And they care about the direction that we want to go and what kind of legacy that we're going to leave for our children. And then our forefathers started this community. So I know I've pissed a lot of people off and I've been pissed off a lot. You know, it doesn't really get me anywhere. Uh, and, uh, and damn it, I formed Blair Sherman as the one that's opened my eyes on a lot of this stuff. So I blame him. Uh, but all kidding aside is that we got, we got to find our, our culture. We have to find where Sheldon is and where all of us sit in that. Uh, and that's everybody getting involved. You know what? Dean Jewitt does not have all the answers. That's evident. Eric Anisco does not have all the answers. Sharon Sherman doesn't have them. So we got to figure out where they're at. Uh, Alicia and I, we have, we traded, uh, you know, round one, two, and three in the, in the boxing rings numerous times on Facebook before we actually met. We come to find out she's the daughter of a kid that I went to school with at Pioneer School. You know, so we have, we have these ties and they go around and I appreciate what she's doing and then where she's been. I've got a little brother, you guys probably noticed that if he wasn't on his meds and had a place to live, he would be the worst one that I was chasing around downtown. So in closing, I guess I just want to, my eyes have been open about what I want to do and what I want to be part of, and I want your guys' eyes to be the same. So thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right. Next on our, our agenda is the squaring in of a new police officer.
Mayor, deputy mayor, uh, councilmembers, I'd like to introduce Tony Drockman, our newest Sheldon police officer. He is a lateral from the Swanson Island travel police. He was born in Sheldon. He went to Sheldon schools. He graduated from Sheldon High School. Comes from a law enforcement, uh, family that's going to Basin County. He served eleven years in the United States Army, um, numerous overseas. Um, he also, uh, after eleven years, he's, uh, he came out of the national, uh, sorry, Washington National. Oh, yeah. National Guard. He's, uh, starting with the National Guard right now. He's been, uh, uh, South Island travel base early. He was for about three years until last wanting to work for the city of Sheldon. It's, it's tremendous to have somebody who has been released from Sheldon that wants to be able to stop her here and go very well to have a board.
Right, Senator.
Yeah, I'll see now. You got your camera down. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state my name.
I tell me Drockman.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution of the state of Washington.
And abide by the code of ethics of the Sheldon Police Department.
And abide by the code of ethics, Sheldon Police Department.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of police officer for the city of Sheldon.
Discharge the duties of police officer for the city of Sheldon. Thank you.
Thank you, your family, pictures, Florida. You also did this.
Right. Go up the room and pee out for a second.
No, that's. Everybody's leaving now. Financial. I know.
Welcome along.
Right, moving on. We now have a, have a presentation from finance director, Mike Iddins.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. This is the first financial report for the fiscal year 2025. So we lag a couple of months when we get these out. This is for January. Um, I wanted to point out at the top of page one, we list the beginning fund balance. Um, we've been preparing for our study session next week where we'll look at this in more detail. Um, but this is where the general fund begins 2025 at just over six point four million dollars. We're estimating an ending fund balance of five point four million. And that's to remind you of the fact that we balance the general fund by using ending fund balance for 2025. So we've broken this out with, um, I'm hoping a little bit more clarity for everyone. We listed the reserve portion, that twenty percent that per council policy is there for emergencies or any kind of situation that might merit using that, such as a downturn in the economy to keep city services in that fiscal year um, level. Um, but as a reminder, if we tapped that reserved portion or used part of it, we would need to come up with a plan to pay it back subsequently. So we would use that or recommend the use of it judiciously. Then the unreserved balance is where we're looking at in the 2025 budget, of course, using a portion of that. So that's the breakdown of that. And then at the bottom, rather than just listing this, we're breaking it out, um, by fiscal year, um, as just a total amount. We're listing where that reserved portion is and where the unreserved portion is. I know that's been a little bit um, confusing. And so the part above the orange line is that um, unreserved part and the part below is what we consider reserved. So we're tracking that over a rolling six-year period. We'll, um, go into that in more detail at next week's study session to really look how that got there and what we're forecasting over the next couple of years are expenses to be. On page two, we list the general fund revenues. One month in the fiscal year, it's really difficult to predict what's going to happen, both on the revenue side and the expense side. Um, for now, we set the budget pretty conservatively so that we're making sure that we're not going to under receive in any of these categories to an extent that might cause us to have to make cuts. At the same time, we know pretty solidly kind of where things are lying. I will tell you that, um, that second line that has our sales and use tax, um, sales tax is down a bit as compared with 2024. So in one month, in January, it's down six percent as compared with January of 2024. I, I'm not ready to make any comments on that as far as predicting anything. It's just something I think we need to know.
Is that January or November, December sales?
So that's for November. It's the, um, it's the sales that occurred in November, the money we receive in January. So at the end of February, that one for, um, December. So I'll, um, steal the lead here into the next financial report. It's down also, um, about four percent. So that's two months of where it's down from the prior year. So we'll just watch that. We're predicting that right now sales tax will be under by, um, a bit, a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. It went over budget last year, so we'll just kind of keep our eye on it and see where it's at. As I've said before, and city manager has said before, our sales tax stays fairly stable because we just, we don't have much luxury spending within the city limits of Sheldon like you would see maybe in some other cities where, you know, motor vehicles, um, recreational vehicles, boats, those sorts of things aren't being purchased here. It's stores, Walmart, that sort of thing where goods are being purchased. So that's where the general fund is looking right now. We're as of January predicting that we'll, um, under collect on the revenue just slightly, but that's going to change. We'll keep you updated monthly on that. Um, we'll again, go into this in a little bit more detail next month. On the expense side, again, this is a tough prediction for us to make in finance because it's one month in the fiscal year. We don't always know what other departments are going to do within the general fund, but as we look at it, when we were preparing this, about a month and a half's worth of data, we're going to assume some things and those assumptions are based on kind of what we know, talking with department heads and looking at the trend in expenditures. And so those, those lines over towards the right that are in brackets that are showing unfavorable that we're predicting at this time or estimating are, um, bracketed there. We know some of those areas are likely to overspend. How much? We don't know. Those that are, we're predicting under may change. Um, one note I will make down on our fire and emergency services contract, when I set that budget for the, um, final adoption of the budget back in the fall, the assessed value that is used to calculate that, we were assuming would be, um, steady or slightly increased in, as we know, it fell once we got those final numbers. So that's the only reason that's coming in under. We pay, um, Central Mason Fire, um, for that contract that we have with them, that interlocal agreement at, at the levy rate times the assessed value. So that's the variation in that. It's set for our agreement. I, we'll, we'll wait and see what happens with this year and as we get closer. But that's where we're estimating the expenses to be. Again, we're trying to not be so conservative that we aren't realistic. So right now, we're estimating that we'll underspend the general fund by about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. So to remind you, we're using one point one million of one-time money to balance it. So we'd end up using a little bit less than that, more in the nine hundred thousand dollar range for 2025 if we're being, you know, looking at this one month in the fiscal year. So we'll keep an eye on it and update you as the year goes on. On page seven, we do a highlight of the funds that the city, um, holds. The one thing I would tell you is it, as you look at this, you can tell it's a pretty busy year. We have a lot happening um, across the city funds because on that dollar change, they're being drawn down. So that tells you a lot of activities happening across all of the funds, from the general fund to the street fund, to the water sewer storm um, and other funds. So, but everything that we're estimating right now shows them at the reserve level that they're designated to be at and in the positive. So that's great. And our FTEs at the bottom, we updated this, of course, for the 2025 budget. This is as of January. So as of January, there are only two and a half vacancies in the general fund. I know that in the other city funds, they've been working, um, through interviews here in the first quarter of the year. So I would expect that we'll see that change. Um, I know they're making some offers and some new staff have joined. Um, but we'll keep that updated. And then towards the end of the report, as always, on pages eight through twelve, we run through each fund to give a little bit more detail on that budget, expected revenue, expected expenditures, and where we see the funds ending at even. And again, I think I've said this now three times. We're looking forward to next week where we'll be able to delve into the forecasts for twenty-five, but also beyond to twenty-six and twenty-seven so that we can prepare, um, for that twenty-six budget and a council retreat on May fifth where we really look at service levels. So I'm happy to answer any questions about, uh, January report.
Anything else or comments? And, and there's a good chance, um, and we're looking at the beginning fund balance for 2025. There's a good chance we'll be using quite a bit of that unreserved balance to balance twenty-six as well, correct?
Yes, if we don't make any changes in service levels, absolutely.
Questions, Mike? Thank you, Mike and your staff for all your hard work and keeping those books up to date. So first business item, our first business item is a resolution about safety improvement design mid-block crossing at Oakton Bay Junior High. Public Works Director Aaron Nix has details for us. This is really important to me.
Assistant.
For my, oh, sorry.
You want to say like nothing to do with the drug.
This is an issue that's really important to me for the entire, like, I've been on this council since that crossing of Oakton Bay Junior High. So I decided to hear some details about it.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, thank you.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to be here. As Mike had previously mentioned, obviously, there are a lot of things going on right now with regard to, we have a lot of grant money and we have a lot of projects. So my goal has been to get a lot of those projects through design and get them constructed. You guys will notice, at least on your future attendance list, there's a parking lot with about five or six projects that are ready to go to bid. So I just want to let you know, we are moving forward with a lot of projects. This is another one that was discussed last year during our capital improvement project process. There was a pedestrian safety study that was done a couple of years ago that identified this particular mid-block crossing. Not that there's been any fatalities or issues there, but visually, because it's on a curb, we might be able to make it a little bit more obvious. And the mayor has expressed some concerns with regard to that mid-block crossing and potentially getting hurt. So what you have before you is, we budgeted $40,000 to design, in essence, a mid-block crossing there with the intention that we're going to be similar to what we did out in front of the high school. There's going to be a refuge island in the middle. That, and what reason being is that allows somebody to get up on a curb, out of the road, safe away from, doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean that a car could jump the curb and hit them, but it does provide a level of safety. There's going to be flash beacons, those kinds of things, as well as other notice. That sign, that existing sign there, we can't even find that current model. So that is probably likely to get replaced as well.
The overhead sign, right, Aaron?
Overhead, yes.
Strung across.
Yeah, it's been hit a couple of times. We've tried to patch it together and we need to work with that. So the bottom line though, Council, that I want you to understand is we do not have construction funds for this. We're purely doing design effort right now to get it ready so that we can get funds to construct. So that's all we're doing with this. In essence, we are doing design project to do that. And then hopefully, in this next CIP cycle, or something, we will find some grant money to help us. This is very much a good systemic pedestrian project that they have allocated grant monies for. So we've been keyed up for that. So with that, I'll answer any questions again. Design, our hope is by August, I will have a final design for you guys. Basically, get through this project.
Right. Mary, may I have a reading of Resolution Number 1350-0924?
Resolution Number 1350-0924, a resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve a public works on-call consultant roster work order to provide design and bidding services for a mid-block pedestrian improvement project.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, please approve Resolution Number 1350-0924 on the action agenda of April 1st, 2025, Council meeting for further consideration.
Second.
Right, comments or questions? I just want to say, it's not familiar with that intersection. It is four lanes of travel across Oakdale Bay Junior High. Kid starts crossing, a car will stop on one side, a car will stop on the other, but the other two cars keep going because they don't see the kid. And I actually have a video after five minutes of being there once where a kid got so close to hit the car with his hand because the car got ran him over. So I'm excited. Hopefully, we get that design done and get some grant money to put something there to save the kids, especially, you know, junior high kids walk a lot. All right. There's no other comments or questions? We have a motion to second to place Resolution Number 1350-0924 on the action agenda of April 5th, Council meeting for further consideration. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Now we have a resolution for monitoring the C Street landfill. Finance Director Mike Giddens has more information.
Thank you. This has been a project, as you know, that's involved many city departments from public works, and this is the finance piece. Working with the Department of Ecology pursuant to our agreed order with them that the city of Shelton completed the cleanup and closure of the C Street landfill. It was funded largely through a grant from the Department of Ecology with matching funds from the city. And per the group agreed order, the city is financially responsible for that post-construction monitoring. So that includes yearly topographical surveys, groundwater sampling, and maintenance of the cap. The purpose of this resolution is to assure that the city will continue to budget for that annual monitoring. It, it's nothing that we're suspecting now that would require further work, but should during that annual testing and sampling, they see that that cap has been compromised, then of course, we'd have to go in and do some more work. But right now, we're confident that that is sustainable in the manner that was presented to you in this resolution. We'll continue to pay for this out of the solid waste fund. And I'm just taking this from the annual, pardon me, the monthly financial report we just went over. At the end of 2024, we had $282,000 in fund. We expect that we may get one more reimbursement from the Department of Ecology and then it will be on the city to pay that. So we would have some years, maybe years two, three, four, or five, depending on the cost, out of the solid waste fund. And then after that point, we can budget it out of the general fund. So the resolution assures the ecology that future budgets will be budgeting for like continued monitoring of the C Street.
Thank you, Mike. May I have a reading of Resolution Number 1369-0225?
Resolution Number 1369-0225, a resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, committing to budget for post-construction monitoring at the C Street landfill.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, please approve Resolution Number 1369-0225 to the April 1st consent agenda for further consideration.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? Jump through the hoops, it sounds like. All right. We have a motion to second to afford Resolution Number 1369-0225 to April 1st consent agenda for food consideration. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Our last business item is a resolution for a contract for towing services. Police Chief Chris Postad has details for it.
Good evening again. Uh, as you may be aware, Jim's Towing, uh, did something last year. He was our, uh, partner for towing services for my officers. Since then, Summit Towing has taken over their business and they are now our primary use for towing services. In the past, we had a contract with, uh, Jim's Towing to regulate our towing fees specifically. When it came to towing fees that were going to be realized by the police department, those generally when we ride on scene and cars will be towed from an accident, most people try and most coster are put upon registered owners as a vehicle search and we're in town. However, if we're going to take a vehicle for a little true battery reason, whether it's a crime scene, a substantial traffic collision, or for even towing, however, all vehicles for whatever purpose or another, that that has been coming upon us today. Recently, we have experienced excessive, uh, vehicle towing fees in excess of $500 per incident. Whereas Summit Towing is a, agrees on a contract with us where we would get the towing for our uses for $200 per tow for personal drivers. Anything else to ask except for asking for, uh, signed by the, like?
You may have a reading? May I have a reading of Resolution Number 1370-0225?
Resolution Number 1370-0225, a resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing a contract for towing services between the Shelton Police Department and Summit Towing.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, please approve Resolution Number 1370-0225 on the consent agenda for the April 1st, 2025 Council meeting.
Second.
Right, comments or questions?
I think they're giving us pretty good deals considering it sounds like.
Yes.
Yeah.
We have a motion to second to place Resolution Number 1370-0225, 0225 on the consent agenda, April 1st. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. All right, now on to action items. Senior Planner Jason Dove for the, for council approval.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, who's the Council? At your last meeting, you performed the first reading of the resolution that's put forward tonight, and that's basically just to green light, in a sense, an application for annexation into city limits for a two and a half acre vacant piece of property located up on Capitol Hill, north of Chestnut Street, kind of in line of where Fair Street is planted. This piece of property is located in our urban growth area. It's been designated for, you know, future incorporation into city limits for, play a while, designated for residential uses. And essentially also to really being asked here is that the community here, the council or the decision maker, to approve this property, in order to go through the formal process of applying into the city for annexation, and that will come before you, of course, a future meeting after he goes through this process of ownership verification, things of that nature that require a public hearing. And yes, kind of in response to Council Member Gilmore's question last week, as I said then, we have our last regular meeting, we are expecting an application for subdivision of this piece following annexation.
Thank you. Is Mary, someone have a public comment on this?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
May I have a reading of Resolution Number 1368-0225?
Resolution Number 1368-0225, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, accepting a proposed annexation for the HNM annexation area pursuant to RCW 35A.14.120.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, please approve Resolution Number 1368-0225 presented.
Second.
All right, comments or questions?
More than Mary here.
Yep, thank you, Jason. We have a motion to second to approve Resolution Number 1368-0225 presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Got our auditor right there to get all that straightened up for it. Our last action item, the ordinance for permitted use matrix community and economic builder Jay Bell that we posted, and Mayor Jay on the screen.
I'm bigger than all of you today. Greetings from my home. Thank you for accommodating me here, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. This is bringing back to you the ordinance 2025-0924, which is to amend our permitted uses matrix within the Shelton Municipal Code. As we talked about back in the early part of January, when we brought the ordinance to you before, our municipal code contains more than 100 permitted uses, and some of them are outdated, such as videotape sales and rentals. And some have never been in our town that we know of, that, but they were incorporated into a list. And they're so specific, such as in the report I mentioned, enameling or metal coating, galvanizing, electroplating. And that's so specific that something that's different or slightly similar, but not exactly meeting that definition, wouldn't be allowed because it's too specific. And so what we typically do, you know, we have our land use code and our regulations contained therein, but we also have our building code. And our building code really defines what the occupancy of the building is going to be, and that's by the building form, the type of construction, so on. And there's different requirements for assembly uses. And so we started looking at our list of more than 100 uses and really kind of distilling it down to a point where what was seven or eight pages now fits on two. And that's, you know, intentional to try to make it more user-friendly, make it pair up in a way with our building code so it's, it's easy for people to understand. And also to encourage more innovation. We're living in a time where new things are popping up all of the time. And, you know, they don't really fit into one very specific category. Take, for example, there's an arts business here in town that they do a lot of education, but they also do some sales, but they also do some gallery. They also, you know, they have a lot of different components and they don't really fit into one category or not. So instead of just saying X business, let's just say business, generally speaking, and/or retail or whatnot, mercantile, and, and really be, you know, a little more broad with our categories. Now, what we have done, though, is identified certain things that are restricted based on their placement due to state law or due to certain uses that we know have externalities that need to be managed. And they're specifically defined in our code. And so we've, you know, mineral extraction is one of them, for example, that we definitely want to make sure that that's going on in the right place in the community. Bed and breakfast, they're welcome in most of our zones, but we want to make sure that there are appropriate conditions attached to it in residential neighborhoods. And so what we've hoped to do is streamline the table, make it more user-friendly, make it pair up with the building code, and hopefully encourage new and innovative uses to locate here and also help some of the folks who are already trying to do some of these things that don't really fit in that box. So we sent this to Commerce for their state mandated 60-day review, and they had no comments. We typically don't hear back from them, which is great. Apparently, we're doing well. So with that being said, staff is recommending approval of the ordinance. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Mary, am I set for a comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
All right, may I have a reading of Resolution Number 2025, ordinance, excuse me, 2025-0924?
Ordinance Number 2025-0924, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending Chapter 20.06 of the Shelton Municipal Code related to permitted uses.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, please approve ordinance Number 2025-0924 presented.
Second.
All right, comments or questions?
Basically, we're just cleaning up our code and maybe moving for businesses, especially small businesses.
Smart or not, ever?
Second, very good. Please approve, please approve.
Right. We have a motion to second to approve ordinance Number 2025-0924 presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Mark, your turn. You have City Manager report.
Just one thing tonight, I want to remind everybody of the Empty Bowls event tomorrow night. The final of the three events, the, the best night, I think, of the three events where soup and bread are served. And everybody gets to see their cool bowls they made over the first two nights. So really appreciate everybody coming out. The room's been packed with everybody down there. And the Shelton Arts Commission, who annually produces this event and volunteers their time and effort to do that, is, it's a great, great activity for our community. So want to encourage people, even if you didn't make a bowl, come on out, you can participate in the event tomorrow night. By 7:00 here in the Civic Center.
Right, any comments or questions for City Manager?
Just one thing, I've been noticing a lot of dog walkers around, especially Hockin Park and then they have the dogs park. And especially the, sometimes against sunlight, so we're getting a lot more walkers. Just want to remind everybody that the Shelton Rotary is taking great care of the Hockin Park, but we're finding a lot more doggy bags. So thank you for using them, if you did use them. But also, if you didn't use them, we have these great let mits that have a little gusset, so it's very easy to pick up with. So thank City Manager for providing those. I'm excited Parks Department for providing those. But please, please, please use those bags when you're out there with your, with your, thank you.
All right. Council, have any new items to discuss tonight? All right, our next study session is the 25th next week. We're going to have the report from the Police Department. We're going to prep for our council retreat. By ballot, net, and application, better, what happened, sales tax discussion. And then our next business meeting is April 1st. Outside of our consent agenda, we're going to have law enforcement memorial induction, proclamation for child prevention month. On our business agenda, we're going to have a resolution for PSA's synthetic PED safety, Olympic Highway improvements, design services, that was a mouthful. And a resolution for, from DOT, City Street Stripping Contract. Also, a resolution for grain Osborne Satellite reclaim water tank design. And we have a public hearing, we have DOT there.
No, sorry, I'm not looking at the public hearing.
We have a public hearing, there's a public hearing and a DOT.
Oh, nothing in this one.
And on our action agenda, which is the stuff we did today, will be on the next action agenda, which would be the, the contract for the design for Oakdale Bay Junior High Crossing. And that is it. Our next meeting is obviously the first, it's still on the 25th. This meeting is adjourned by 6:49 PM.